Good evening and welcome to the January 13th meeting of Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Council members, Devine.
Here.
Friedman.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver. Nielsen.
Here. Today's flag salute, I would like to request that the Falcons captain lead us in the flag salute, if there's a team captain that would like to come forward.
There you go.
Please rise.
Face the flag.
Do I lead it?
Yes.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
He's standing for his invitation.
As we start the new year, let us look at the days, weeks, and months ahead of us in 2015 as an unwritten chapter in a book. As we write this new chapter, let us pray for a year where we seek to improve the lives of everyone who calls Glendale their home or place of work. As Benjamin Franklin wrote in one of his early almanacs, "Let us always try to quote, 'be at war with our vices, at peace with our neighbors, and let every new year find us a better person.'" End quote. Let us truly declare war on those thoughts that seek to divide us against ourselves, that inject prejudice, hatred, or envy into our lives. Let us be at peace with our neighbors, both within our city and without, and let us pray that by doing so, we write a page in the book of this new year that will be one for all to remember. As always, let us pray for peace in Glendale and all over the world, whether for the victims of violence in Syria or the innocent lives lost in the heinous attacks in France. Let us pray for their loved ones and for those in our armed forces who serve to protect us. We pray for them tonight and for peace always. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. You may be seated.
Good job.
Good job.
May we have the report, Mr. Clerk?
The agenda for the January 13th, 2015, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, January 8th, 2015, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. What's next on the agenda?
At three, presentation and appointments. At three is the agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, January 20, 2015.
Thank you. Next item?
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, yes.
No, that's okay. Members of the council just wanted to notify the public that the January 20th, 2015 Housing Authority and City Council meetings have been canceled.
Thank you. Ms. Beers, what's next?
Through B is proclamation designating January 13th, 2015, as the 12th anniversary of Korean-American Day.
Thank you. And to receive this proclamation, I think we have a very special group of guests, all the way from Korea, from the Republic of South Korea, who are represented by students from various schools from Bohn, our friendly city in South Korea, one of our friendly cities in Korea. So I would like to invite them to the microphone to receive the proclamation. So first of all, allow me to welcome you again, as I did in person, to the city of Glendale in the United States. I understand that you've literally gotten off the plane like half an hour ago, an hour ago, and you're jet-lagged, you're very tired. But nevertheless, I hope, you know, I'm very happy that you're here. I hope you can stay with us for the next five to 10 minutes, and you have a great experience in Glendale and wherever it is that you get to travel over the next 10 days in the United States. Our relationship is very special. Our school exchange program is very important to all of us, and it provides an important cultural exchange opportunity for not only you, but also Glendale students who are lucky enough to travel to South Korea and spend some time there. I do have a proclamation that I'd like to present to you, and I will come down and present it to you personally, but I'd like to read it before I come down. And the proclamation states, "Whereas Glendale and its adjacent cities are home to approximately 700,000 Korean-Americans, the largest concentration of Koreans outside of the Korean Peninsula, and whereas the history of Korean immigration to America began as hundred-and-second courageous Korean men, women, and children ventured across the vast Pacific Ocean aboard the SS Gaelic to land in Hawaii on February 13, 1903, and whereas they did not falter in their pursuit of the American dream, but through tenacious effort and sacrifice established a new home in a new land and educated their Korean-American children. And whereas while the first Korean immigrants fought for the freedom and independence of the motherland invaded by the Japanese Empire, their children grew up to be patriotic American citizens, served in the armed forces of the United States during World War II, and made other important contributions to mainstream America. And whereas in search of better opportunities for their children, beginning in the 1970s, a multitude of dynamic Koreans joined the increasing flow of immigration to the United States, and with diligence, fortitude, and a strong belief in the American dream, these immigrants turned depressed areas into thriving communities and raised their children as productive Korean-Americans. And whereas as the community enters a new era and creates new history, we must instill in the upcoming generation's proper appreciation for the courage and value of their ancestors and deep sense of their roots and pride in their own cultural heritage so that they may better contribute to this great nation, rich with ethnic and cultural diversity. Now therefore, I, Zara Sinanian, Mayor of the city of Glendale, proclaim January 13, 2015, as Korean-American Day." Before we come down, he's going to answer you back. Very short. Please. Yeah, that sounds great.
Thank you very much for proclaiming this day as Korean-American Day, and I'm very proud of, I am very proud that I'm standing here, Glendale, and my motherland, Korea. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. My colleagues want to make comments now or after, after I present the proclamation?
Well, I can do it now. I just want to, sure, you want to go on down and out. While you're walking, I'll just say that, "Welcome to Glendale, welcome to the United States, and we're proud to have you with us and very happy, and we wish you a wonderful, I wish you a wonderful stay here in the United States."
And while you're, while you're giving the proclamation, Glendale has had a very warm relationship with the Republic of Korea. We have had wonderful exchanges with the students, a wonderful cultural exchange between our two countries. Our council members visit Korea, and your mayors and governors come to visit us. We have a tribute to the tragedy of the comfort women in our park. I'm sure you'll be visiting that. And we owe much of our warm relationship to Mr. Chang Lee, who is our ambassador to the Republic of Korea.
Other than to add that, I was just in South Korea less than two and a half months ago, and I'm still under great impressions from your homeland and the homeland of so many Glendalians, or at least their ancestral homeland. And it gives, I think anyone who's visited Korea gives us a unique opportunity to better understand where Korean-Americans come from psychologically, historically, and allows us to better understand them.
Mayor and council members, we have a Korean-American Foundation who's here to present you with appreciation plaques, so I'm going to bring them up.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is TC Kim. I'm the president of the Korean-American Foundation of Glendale, and here we have national president of the Korean-American Foundation and the honorary national president of the Korean-American Foundation. I'm also a proud parent and a resident of Glendale City for past 22 years. All my sons went through GUSD schools, from kindergarten all the way to Glendale College, and I'm also very proud to be a Korean-American, and especially on a day like this when we celebrate the immigration of Korean-Americans to the United States for 112, that's a long time, and also especially being recognized as a Korean-American Day for 112th anniversary today. We really want to thank you from Korean-American Foundation for all your efforts and support for the Korean-Americans in, especially in this area, and we'd like to present to you, from three of us, appreciation plaque to Mr. Mayor as well as four council members. If we can, I'll just read it, and if you could please come to the front for the photo for the Korean media. I'll read it off first. "All the appreciation presented to Glendale City Mayor Zara Sinanian in recognition of your outstanding public service, leadership, dedication, and contribution in supporting the Korean-American community. In celebration of the 112th anniversary of Korean immigration to the United States and of the 12th anniversary of the Korean-American Day, we extend our sincere gratitude and best wishes for your continued success. January 13, 2015, Korean-American Foundation National President Mr. Sung Un Kim and Honorary National President Mr. Sang Won Park and the President of the Glendale Chapter, TC Kim." Thank you. Oh, here we are. Present it to you. Thank you. One this way, and the other one facing for the... Can we get one from this way for the city council?
Sure. Well, they could come up here.
Oh, would it be possible to present all the city councilmen, please? Come to the, yes, all the council, I have for each one of them.
Go down there. Come up here.
One by one. Laura Freeman?
She's not here.
She's not here. Dave Weaver? He's not here there? Oh, okay. Paula Devine. There we go. And, right?
Thank you.
So stand. Oh. Where's the proclamation? Proclamation. Proclamation. One, two. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. See you again. No! It happened.
Thank you.
This TC worked with domestic violence. I met him up at the Armenian festival.
Oh, a festival, yes.
Nice guy.
Okay, why don't we come back to order, please? Because if you think things were happy in our chambers before, wait for the next item. Mr. Clerk?
At item C, 3C is a mayor's commendation to Crescent Valley High School football team for winning the CIF championship.
Last year, we were celebrating the victories of our water polo team, and before you know it, one of our football teams, the Falcons, won the CIF championship, first time in 40 years. Last time, we had that kind of success was 1973. So, I don't know, you guys make us proud, we're very happy. We wanted you guys to come here and, so that we could see you and you could see us, and we could show our appreciation for, we love you more. So, I don't know, I don't know what to say. Each one of you has clearly made, made an impact in making our city bigger and better and more proud today than we were, you know, a couple of months ago. For that, we're very thankful. And to each one of you, to your coach Schilling, I hope, he's here? Great, thank you. And I have a commendation for you. I want to give it to you, but I'd like an opportunity for you to come up and maybe say a few words. My colleagues, I'm sure, would have to, would love to praise you for what you've done. So come on down. Strength in numbers.
Good job, guys. Congratulations, guys. Congratulations. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Good job, guys. Can't go all the way back up there, but I'm sure he'll give you a chance. He's going to come down. Don't you, don't worry about it.
No, that's great. Coach, don't worry about it.
I want to know what he plays. He's cute. Cute, cute, cute.
I think we've sort of, everyone's kind of situated. I know there's, there's a lot of you, and the space isn't quite sufficient, but, yeah, we love the fact that you've all gotten up, you're all standing here. So, Mr. Najarian, would you like to say a few words?
I do. You should all be very proud of yourselves. It was an incredible feat to go 14-0 and to win the CIF championship. I assure you that as you age, as you get older, 10 years from now, 20 years from now, you will definitely look back on this achievement and you will never forget it. You will remember your coach, you will remember your teammates, and you should always remember that there's nothing that you can't accomplish if you work together as a team, and you set your mind to it, and you're ready to put in the hard work and dedication, just as you did this year. That's what you need to take from this, and you're champions today, and you'll be champions throughout your life if you keep up those ethics. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you. Probably what you, you all don't know is that I was a coach at St. Gabriel High School. And we used to come over, and I don't know if they, do they still come over to CV and, and play? Are you still rivals or?
Not, not anymore.
Not anymore? Different leagues? Well, so I understand, and I've been through a CIF championship, and I understand how amazing it is, how fantastic it is. I mean, I was trying to explain to the councilmen that this is huge, this is huge, and you are to be congratulated, and I hope the thrill of this, this championship never leaves you, just hold it close to your heart forever. Coaches, I know how much work you had to put into this, and I congratulate you. I, and I just hope that all of you will continue, continue to appreciate this very, very special moment in your lives, because it will live with you forever. Congratulations.
Congratulations. So I'll tell you so that, you know, no one gets a fire truck escort in Glendale.
Yeah, I was, and I was going to start, but thank you very much for the commendation. It was, this was an awesome opportunity. We've had things going, it's been a whirlwind of excitement ever since our game December 5th, and it was a lot of fun coming down the street. The kids had never had so much fun with that many police sirens right around them, and they weren't in trouble, so this was, this was a really great thing. We, we had, we had a really great group of guys this year, great group of players, we have some great coaches, we have our managers here today, we have our trainer, Junco, and it's just been a real great group effort to everybody to come together and have this wonderful season. And again, we thank you because this, this was an awesome experience today. Thank you.
Well, thank you. So, to commemorate your monumental achievement on behalf of the city of Glendale, I don't know if you think of it that way, but for us, it's that way. You've, you've done something for us, for the city of Glendale, and we appreciate it very much, and that's why we wanted to show a token of appreciation by inviting you here. I read somewhere in the, in the media that the, the media coverage that your achievement got outside of Glendale was, was much more accentuated than it was here, so I didn't like that, so we wanted to make sure. Right, I mean, I don't, other than, you know, having the police escort and fire trucks, I can't think of what more we could have done. Of course, jokes aside, you are very appreciated, your team's very appreciated, the effort that you put in, the fame that you've brought to the city. Keep up the good work, keep up the same type of commitment in everything you do in life. And I'm going to read this commendation, and I'm going to ask Paula Devine to present it to you as a former coach. So, "Falcons football team, Crescent Valley High School, congratulations on taking home the 2014 CIF championship with a perfect 14-0 season. Your commitment, partnership, and camaraderie are makings of a truly great team. On behalf of the city of Glendale, I salute you, and we're very proud of your accomplishments." Zara Sinanian, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. My colleagues want to make comments now or after, after I present the proclamation?
Well, I can do it now. I just want to, sure, you want to go on down and out. While you're walking, I'll just say that, "Welcome to Glendale, welcome to the United States, and we're proud to have you with us and very happy, and we wish you a wonderful, I wish you a wonderful stay here in the United States."
And while you're, while you're giving the proclamation, Glendale has had a very warm relationship with the Republic of Korea. We have had wonderful exchanges with the students, a wonderful cultural exchange between our two countries. Our council members visit Korea, and your mayors and governors come to visit us. We have a tribute to the tragedy of the comfort women in our park, I'm sure you'll be visiting that, and we owe much of our warm relationship to Mr. Chang Lee, who is our ambassador to the Republic of Korea.
That's it. Other than to add that, I was just in South Korea less than two and a half months ago, and I'm still under great impressions from your homeland and the homeland of so many Glendalians, or at least their ancestral homeland, and it gives, I think anyone who's visited Korea gives a, gives us a unique opportunity to better understand where Korean-Americans come from psychologically, historically, and allows us to better understand them.
Mayor and council members, we have a Korean-American Foundation who's here to present you with appreciation plaque, so I'm going to bring them up.
Hi.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is TC Kim. I'm the president of the Korean-American Foundation of Glendale, and here we have national president of the Korean-American Foundation and the honorary national president of the Korean-American Foundation. I'm also a proud parent and a resident of Glendale City for past 22 years. All my sons went through GUSD schools, from kindergarten all the way to Glendale College, and I'm also very proud to be a Korean-American, and especially on a day like this when we celebrate the immigration of Korean-Americans to the United States for 112, that's a long time, and also especially being recognized as a Korean-American Day for 112th anniversary today. We really want to thank you from Korean-American Foundation for all your efforts and support for the Korean-Americans in, in this, especially in this area, and we'd like to present to you, from three of us, appreciation plaque to Mr. Mayor as well as for council members. If we can, I'll just read it, and if you could please come to the front for the photo for the Korean media. I'll read it off first. "All the appreciation presented to Glendale City Mayor Zara Sinanian in recognition of your outstanding public service, leadership, dedication, and contribution in supporting the Korean-American community. In celebration of the 112th anniversary of Korean immigration to the United States and of the 12th anniversary of the Korean-American Day, we extend our sincere gratitude and best wishes for your continued success. January 13, 2015, Korean-American Foundation National President Mr. Sung Un Kim and Honorary National President Mr. Sang Won Park and the President of the Glendale Chapter, TC Kim." Thank you. Oh, here we are. Present it to you. Thank you. One this way, and the other one facing for the... Can we get one from this way for the city council?
Sure. Well, they could come up here.
Oh, would it be possible to present all the city councilmen, please? Come to the, yes, all the council, I have for each one of them.
Go down there. Come up here.
One by one. Laura Freeman?
She's not here.
She's not here. Dave Weaver? He's not here there? Oh, okay. Paula Devine. There we go. And... That's all right? Right? So stand? Oh. Where's the proclamation? Proclamation. Proclamation. Yeah, so let's go to the... One, two. Thank you. Thank you. Keep up the good work. Thank you. See you again. No! It happened.
Thank you. Thank you.
This TC worked with domestic violence. I met him up at the Armenian festival.
Oh, a festival, yes.
Yeah, nice guy.
Okay, why don't we come back to order, please? Because if you think things were happy in our chambers before, wait for the next item. Mr. Clerk?
At item C, 3C is a mayor's commendation to Crescent Valley High School football team for winning the CIF championship.
So, yeah, city of Glendale, right? Last year, we were celebrating the victories of our water polo team, and before you know it, our, one of our football teams, the Falcons, won the CIF championship, first time in 40 years. Last time, we had that kind of success was 1973. So, I don't know, you, you guys make us proud, we're very happy. We wanted you guys to come here and, and so that we could see you and you could see us, and we could show our appreciation for, we love you more. So, I don't know, I don't know what to say. Each one of you has clearly made, made an impact in making our city bigger and better and more proud today than we were, you know, a couple of months ago. For that, we're very thankful. And to each one of you, to your coach Schilling, I hope, he's here? Great, thank you. And I have a commendation for you. I want to give it to you, but I'd like an opportunity for you to come up and maybe say a few words. My colleagues, I'm sure, would have to, would love to praise you for what you've done. So come on down. Strength in numbers.
Good job, guys. Congratulations, guys. Congratulations. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Good job, guys. Can't go all the way back up there, but I'm sure he'll give you a chance. He's going to come down. Don't you, don't worry about it.
No, that's great. Coach, don't worry about it.
I want to know what he plays. He's cute. Cute, cute, cute.
I think we've sort of, everyone's kind of situated. I know there's, there's a lot of you, and the space isn't quite sufficient, but, yeah, we love the fact that you've all gotten up, you're all standing here. So, Mr. Najarian, would you like to say a few words?
I do. You should all be very proud of yourselves. It was an incredible feat to go 14-0 and to win the CIF championship. I assure you that as you age, as you get older, 10 years from now, 20 years from now, you will definitely look back on this achievement, and you will never forget it. You will remember your coach, you will remember your teammates, and you should always remember that there's nothing that you can't accomplish if you work together as a team, and you set your mind to it, and you're ready to put in the hard work and dedication, just as you did this year. That's what you need to take from this, and you're champions today, and you'll be champions throughout your life if you keep up those ethics. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you. Probably what you, you all don't know is that I was a coach at St. Gabriel High School. And we used to come over, and I don't know if they, do they still come over to CV and, and play? Are you still rivals or?
Not, not anymore.
Not anymore? Different leagues? Well, so I understand, and I've been through a CIF championship, and I understand how amazing it is, how fantastic it is. I mean, I was trying to explain to the councilmen that this is huge, this is huge, and you are to be congratulated, and I hope the thrill of this, this championship never leaves you, just hold it close to your heart forever. Coaches, I know how much work you had to put into this, and I, I congratulate you. I, and I just hope that all of you will continue, continue to appreciate this very, very special moment in your lives, because it, it will live with you forever. Congratulations.
Congratulations. So I'll tell you so that, you know, no one gets a fire truck escort in Glendale.
Yeah, I was, and I was going to start, but thank you very much for the commendation. It was, this was an awesome opportunity. We've had things going, it's been a whirlwind of excitement ever since our game December 5th, and it was a lot of fun coming down the street. The kids had never had so much fun with that many police sirens right around them, and they weren't in trouble, so this was a, this was a really great thing. We, we had, we had a really great group of guys this year, great group of players, we have some great coaches, we have our managers here today, we have our trainer, Junco, and it's just been a real great group effort to everybody to come together and have this wonderful season. And again, we thank you because this, this was an awesome experience today. Thank you.
Well, thank you. So, to commemorate your monumental achievement on behalf of the city, city of Glendale, I don't know if you think of it that way, but for us, it's that way. You've, you've done something for us, for the city of Glendale, and we appreciate it very much, and that's why we wanted to show a token of appreciation by inviting you here. I read somewhere in the, in the media that the, the media coverage that your achievement got outside of Glendale was, was much more accentuated than it was here, so I didn't like that, so we wanted to make sure. Right, I mean, I don't, other than, you know, having the police escort and fire trucks, I can't think of what more we could have done, but, of course, jokes aside, you are very appreciated, your team's very appreciated, the effort that you put in, the fame that you've brought to the city. Keep up the good work, keep up the same type of commitment in everything you do in life. And I'm going to read this commendation, and I'm going to ask Paula Devine to present it to you as a former coach. So, "Falcons football team, Crescent Valley High School, congratulations on taking home the 2014 CIF championship with a perfect 14-0 season. Your commitment, partnership, and camaraderie are makings of a truly great team. On behalf of the city of Glendale, I salute you, and we're very proud of your accomplishments." Zara Sinanian, Mayor.
Thank you.
Here's all our picture people.
Congratulations. Congrats.
Thank you, thank you very much. Hey, guys, make sure you're looking at the cameras here so we can get some pictures.
Here, you. Get the mayor.
Come on, that's where I'm being beat. You're blocking the beard. He's blocking the beard, man. Appreciate the beard.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir, it's a lot. Thank you very much. Congratulations.[1512.13]
So I want to thank your parents, but you should thank your parents too, because for obvious reasons, you, you wouldn't be here without them. But also, some of the drive that you have, some of the determination that, that has gotten you where you are, or most of it, or a lot of it, is, is due to your parents. So thank you for raising great athletes, making a great contribution to our school system, to our sports, and to the city of Glendale. Thank you. That's it, that's all I wanted to say.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be forgetful if I didn't call out our police and fire departments. They jumped at the opportunity to flex their schedule, to be able to escort these young men down here at no cost to the city, so thanks to them as well.
Well, thank you. Who was it, who gave this? Yes, yes, Mr. Ochoa, thanks for, police officers and firefighters for always being there.
A celebration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next item, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Mayor and Council, add 3D as a presentation by Dreams Magazine, which ranked Glendale number one of all the foothill cities for 2015.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I am Philip Lanziffa, I'm the Director of Economic Development. And last year was, we saw a lot of acknowledgement, a great policies that the city and you put in place. We saw some great things out of the football team, and 2015 is, is starting out just as well. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Steve Tubia, the owner and publisher of The Other LA Magazine, Dreams, with a special presentation for the city of Glendale.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council and city staff, I think there's a video that I wanted to show first, so before I make my presentation, this is a video I conducted last fall with the mayor. When it comes to the other Los Angeles, Glendale, California is definitely a major destination. 200,000 residents, and it has now become an international cosmopolitan city with major corporate headquarters, 18-hour living, downtown shopping, beautiful mountains, and gorgeous historical neighborhoods. With me today is the mayor of Glendale, and we're gonna talk about what makes Glendale so special.
Over time, we saw the necessity to make sure that our downtown was just as vibrant as our residential areas, because our residential areas are truly beautiful, like you said. It's a mixture of historic, a mixture of architecture, comfort, and mixture of cultures indeed that contribute to sort of the residential, social aspect of Glendale. Downtown was limited in terms of its geographic area to Brand and Central, and three or four streets in downtown, in the core downtown area. And we believe that giving downtown some more depth, in terms of width, in terms of really the ability for people to actually live in downtown, on Brand, on Central, would benefit, the city would benefit the vision that we have of the city. And that vision being, again, a vibrant 18-hour downtown where people don't necessarily have to just come to work and then leave, but come to work, eat, have a good time, shop, entertainment, and, and, you know, ultimately, the goal is to have them live there.
With me today is Amy Wang, my associate. Before I start, I just kind of give you like, who is this Dreams Magazine and this other LA magazine? I've been a resident of Glendale, my children attended schools here, as well as a resident of La Cuenada and Pasadena. My interest in economic development goes back nearly 20 years ago, when I was hired by the Los Angeles Economic Development Corporation to put together a plan on how do we position Southern California as a leading new international and technology region. About 15 years ago, I met Scott Ochoa, when he was in Monrovia, and I was hired by the San Gabriel Valley Economic Partnership to also position Southern California in this region. So many people have come to this region. I'm an immigrant as well. Came, I'm Italian from New York. Amy's an immigrant from mainland China. When moved here, a lot of my friends that came here from foreign countries, especially Armenian population, the Koreans. And one of the areas that I've seen, as we look at the 32 cities in particular in the foothills, is how did a city, there's 32 of you in San Gabriel Valley, my evaluation was how did the cities take the tremendous demographic and psychographic changes over the last 20 years and deal with it as a city? That was your first issue that I saw. The second issue was how do you bring a city together of diversity to do planning? I won't comment about other cities, but the planning process here has truly produced a spectacular, beautiful, well-developed, organized downtown area. How do you integrate the various cultures and the communities? So when we looked at the evaluation, and as you know, what we're calling, a lot of the younger generation are moving back into cities, you're not seeing the, the large suburban sprawl. So when we looked at all of the communities, the evaluation was Glendale has achieved, in our opinion, that ultimate goal of planning and organization. Other cities are still in the process, so for this year, in our February issue, we'll present this to the city council, this is a combination, mayor of last year's. This is our headline, is Glendale is ranked the number one place to live, work, and play. The other four that we've selected was Monrovia, downtown Los Angeles, which is South Park, and as well as Eagle Rock. So with that, I'd like to congratulate you, and open to any questions if you have them of us.
Questions, wonderful, thank you.
It's one of those things where good things are being said, you don't want to change the, the mood, but thank you so much.
Our pleasure.
And I think objectively speaking, Glendale has done much to be a preeminent city to live in, to be a city where people can live with a high quality of life, people can live dignified lives, people can live and feel safe, comfortable, entertained.
You got it all.
We got it, we have it all, and we're only trying to make it even better.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Well, let's give the magazine a plug.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a great magazine, it is a alternative to the traditional LA magazine. It has great articles and wonderful, this is the shopping guide I'm looking at, great cars and watches and resort destinations and real estate.
And the Americana.
And the Americana. And I look forward to the very next issue, so, thank you. Dreams Magazine.
Fabulous, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just take one more minute of your time.
Please.
This is, this, this really is a nice acknowledgement for us, and as I said in my opening comments, it really does carry on with a lot of good things that the city of Glendale is doing. So I can run through those, because it really is some great accomplishments by a lot of our different departments. I will plug, most recently, most business-friendly city in Los Angeles County, we're the safest mid-sized city in America by Movado.com, Neighborhood of the Year, Curbed LA, A-Rating by the American Lung Association for Healthiest Cities, number one building and safety division, an A grade for historic preservation from the Los Angeles Conservancy, best energy program and best water program awards for GWP from the California Municipal Utilities Association, and not to forget our friends in finance, distinguished budget presentation award from the State Department of Finance. So this really is just adding to a lot of the great work that this organization is doing, and I too congratulate you, our staff, and the entire city of Glendale that has helped with this acknowledgement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lanziffa. Okay, next item, please.
Next item is the consent calendar, including minutes following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion, a member of council, or the audience requesting separate consideration. May do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed. Mr. Mayor and Council, I have to also announce that on 4D, there is a change in the name of the contractor and the amount.
Okay.
I'll move the consent calendar with that amendment to 4D.
I'll second.
May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers, Devine.
Yes.
Friedman. Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver. Mayor Sinanian.
Yes, thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is item five, this is portion for city council and staff comments.
I did.
Sure. Ms. Devine.
Thank you, I'd like to just wish everyone a Happy New Year, and may it be more successful and healthier than last year. I, I have a presentation to make to the city, and this one comes from Kiwanis Club of Glendale. Kiwanis International is celebrating its 100th birthday this year, it's their centennial, and, yes, let's applaud that. Must be a Kiwanian in the crowd, besides us. Anyway, Dr. John Button was here, he is the president of Kiwanis International, and he's from Canada. And so the gift to the city that I was very lucky to receive for all of us is called an Inukshuk, and it is in the shape, it's made of stone, and it's in the shape of a man, and these were used as directions when, when people were roaming around in Canada, and they would know the directions where they were going. And so the significance of this Inukshuk, and I'll read this to you, because I think it's really important, it reminds us of our interdependent responsibilities to invest our efforts today and to direct a better way for all of us tomorrow. So I present this to Mayor Sinanian, on behalf of Kiwanis International.
Thank you.
You're welcome, and congratulations to Kiwanis.
Yes, congratulations to Kiwanis. Should I say second-best club, or should I not?
No, it's the first, Ben, no. He's a Rotarian.
One of the best, let's just put it that way.
It's an excellent club.
Thank you, excellent club, a club that makes us proud, a club that has its sole function to do good things.
Exactly.
For everyone.
Right.
So, thank you.
You're welcome, and, thank you, and I, I want to, I've been getting some emails, Mr. Ochoa, about kennel fees, and I would like to have some, maybe some information on what they are, why they are, and what they, what purpose they serve, and, you know, complaints about, I guess, that the fee was raised?
Yes, as part of this current budget, the 1415 year, we have increased that fee. Now, that fee, there were two fees originally, there was the application fee and the, the actual kennel fee of $102.51 respectively, for 153 total, for those households housing three or more dogs. And the fee covers the direct cost for the inspection from animal control, going out to inspect the facility to make sure it's safe, sanitary, decent, both for the folks living there, as well as the animals that are living there, as well as the processing of the fee itself. That fee had not been increased for a couple of years. The fee was also viewed as possibly being confusing and having it broken into two pieces, so as part of this current fiscal year's fee study that was submitted back in May of 14, we combined the two fees into a single fee for the application and kennel, and that went to $229, so it's a $76 increase. But again, it covers only the cost to provide the service, which we contract out to the Pasadena Humane Society. We don't have our own animal control operation, it's simply cheaper to do it through a third party.
So if a person has three dogs, they pay $229, or if they have?
If they have three or more, you have to get a kennel fee. If you don't have the three or more, if you have two dogs or one dog, then you don't need a kennel fee.
So it was just, it was a matter of economics that we raised those fees?
Simply recovering the cost it takes to provide that level of service. And if we had our own animal control program, probably would cost a little bit more, because we would house the overhead. This way, we're basically just contracting that out to a different organization.
I hope they understand that, thank you.
Thank you. Anything, Mr. Najarian?
Happy New Year.
Great. So I'll say Happy New Year as well. If, if any one of us tried to tell you the number of events, Christmas, holiday, New Years, that we've gone through in the last one month, you'll be very, you would be very annoyed, but you'd also be very impressed of how many organizations and groups there are in our city, and really speaks to the greatness of our city. I will mention that Mr. Najarian and I went to a very special concert on, say, Saturday night, Glendale Philharmonic was playing at the First Baptist Church in Glendale, and the director of the Glendale Philharmonic, executive director Ruslan Birukov is in the audience. It was a fantastic concert, really top-notch, first-rate, I mean, the, the quality of, of music was extremely impressive. Another indication of what a great city Glendale is, to have that caliber of classical music and, and a philharmonic group in our city. So, thank you, Mr. Birukov. And last thing, you know, Happy New Year to everyone. It's a new year, a new day, this year's gonna be better than next year, no doubt, we're certainly gonna work hard to make that the case, and I am going to abuse my position right now for about 30 seconds, and wish my daughter happy birthday, happy ninth birthday, because she's at home with her brothers and mom and grandparents celebrating her birthday, and I'm here. So I promise that as consolation, I would wish her happy birthday from the dais, and I love you, you're the best daughter dad can ever dream of having.
And I also wish her happy birthday, happy birthday.
Is this Anahid?
Anahid.
Happy birthday, Anahid.
Thank you, so that's it. Sorry for abusing your time. That's it, what's next?
Number six on the agenda is community event announcements, the three-minute portion, there is, I believe, one card on this item?
We have two cards now. First speaker is Carmen Libaritian. Followed by Ruslan Birukov. You have three minutes.
Hello, thank you. It's a hard act to follow, congratulations, Happy New Year, your three first agenda, uh, items were great, anyway, okay. Mayor Sinanian, council members, city manager, assistant manager, city clerk and staff, I think I covered everyone. As you may already be aware, this year commemorates the 100th anniversary of the Armenian genocide. There are many different commemorations being held around the world, the country, and in the city of Glendale. I am here on behalf of the Armenian Women's Coalition of Los Angeles, that was specifically formed in honor of the centennial. Our coalition is made up of 13 women's organizations, some of which are located here in the city of Glendale. Our event is the first event in a series of events commemorating the 100th anniversary of the Armenian genocide. As I was saying, I am here to invite you and the community to attend an all-day panel discussion, beginning at 9:00 AM at Woodbury University, that will deal with the resilient woman honoring the past and embracing the future. The panel discussions will be held in Armenian and in English. The event begins at 9:00 AM and ends at 3:00 PM, lunch is included, and the admission fee is $20. I am here to invite all of you personally, and announce so that the community may want to come and join us.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Libaritian.
Are there tickets, or?
Uh, yeah, well, the tickets are at the door.
At the door?
Uh-huh, yes.
And how much are they?
Twenty.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it includes lunch.
Okay, well, thank you for doing this.
I'm sure you'll enjoy it.
Sounds like a wonderful program, and for empowering women, I think it's a very worthy discussion, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Libaritian. Next speaker is Ruslan Birukov.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, staff, clerks, everyone, Happy New Year, happy birthday.
Yeah, state your name for the record.
Oh, yeah, Ruslan Birukov. I am the founder and executive director of Glendale Philharmonic, I'm here basically to thank you for joining us on Saturday, on our, you know, holiday concert and birthday party, and we prepared a little video, sort of a perspective of that, what was happening on Saturday night, so maybe we could play it. So that's our little, you know, presentation. I also would like to thank publicly Glendale Arts and Lisa Glickman, they were instrumental in this event, and Glendale Educational Foundation with Susan Hunt, and, you know, the Crescent Valley High School, the kids that were just been here, we had 30 children from, from that particular school in our concert, they requested 30 student tickets, it's a wonderful school I have to, you know, to mention. Now, I hope to see you in our future events. Our next event is at the end of February, it's vodka tasting party. Oops, sorry.
It's okay.
So, yeah, please, please join us at the vodka tasting.
What was the date on that?
That's February 28th, that's the last day of February, Saturday night, and we'll have celebrity comedian Imo Phillips joining us, it's gonna be truly fun event. Then on March 28th, we'll have a wonderful chamber music concert, we'll be Roberto Cani, who is the concertmaster of LA Opera, Armin Guzalimyan, he's an, our legendary pianist, you know, Armin's immediate brother actually is a dean of Juilliard School, and myself, we'll be doing a chamber music piano trio concert with, in, to commemorate the Armenian genocide. So please, join us, keep this event in mind, we'll make a couple more announcements, and I would like to a little bit apologize to Mr. Najarian, because I think you didn't get enough attention on the event, you know, I'm sorry.
I had my wife with me, so she was giving me all the attention.
Okay, all right. Because I thought, I, I, I hope I didn't make a political mistake by, you know, inviting the mayor on the stage to give the, and probably should have had both of you, so, thank you once again, and Happy New Year, Merry Christmas, Happy Birthday.
Happy New Year, Merry Christmas to you too, and I think you, you want, you want me to thank, because you'd, you'd want to thank them, the First Baptist Church for providing the wonderful venue to Glendale Philharmonic. It's a beautiful, beautiful.
Yes.
Place to have a classical concert, and thank you for providing those $1 student tickets, making classical art accessible to our kids, which is something that they do in most Western European cities, and I think on the East Coast also.
Yes, I hope that, you know, this is the first year that we had so many kids from high schools, and it was largely because of the effort of Glendale Arts and Glendale Educational Foundation. Educational Foundation. So I hope that this relationship will extend and we'll develop it, and we'll have even more younger generation listeners on our concerts. I really appreciate their...
I'd just like to congratulate you on your fifth anniversary. I can't believe it's been five years. It's like I remember yesterday when you first appeared, I was watching at home on television. So it's congratulations, it's a very successful program, and I hope to be there in the near future.
We will definitely invite you, so please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening. Next item, please.
Under item seven, adoption of ordinances. Seven A is ordinance adopting the execution of a lease agreement for the lease of a portion of the city's property located at 2740 Hermosa Avenue. This was introduced on December 16, 2014 by Councilmember Weaver.
Yes, do we have...
Any cards on that?
No.
I'll move seven A.
Second.
Yeah, we have the roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman. Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver. Mayor Sinanian.
Yes. Next item, please.
At seven B is ordinance amending section 2.64080 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to the frequency of meetings with the Transportation and Parking Commission. This was also introduced on December 16, 2014 by Councilmember Weaver.
I'll move seven B.
Second.
Yeah, we have the roll call, please.
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman. Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver. Mayor Sinanian.
Yes. Next item.
Seven C is ordinance amending section 2.38.090 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to frequency of meetings of the Commission on Status of Women. This was also introduced on December 16, 2014 by Councilmember Weaver. C1 is a resolution appropriating up to $7,500.
I, before anyone moves on this item, I wanna say that, I was hoping that members of the Commission would actually be here and express themselves for or against this, but I don't know that anyone is here from the Commission.
Christine Powers.
Christine's here?
No other members.
Oh, Christine, she's the city adjunct to the staff? Okay, yeah. I meant one of the Commissioners. But, and the reason I'm concerned is because I don't want this to be somehow be interpreted as the Commission being downgraded, or its mission being somehow given less importance by the city council or staff, and that's why I was hoping that people would be here and we would hear some kind of discourse about it, but no one's here.
Well, as I understand, Mr. Mayor, that this only sets the frequency of the regular meeting. Should there be any urgent action that special meetings may be set? And as well as, I'm not sure, the issue of the funding, this is coming from, the $7,500 is for their strategic plan, and by ordinance or by law, it must be borne by the city, and the city is in fact paying this.
That's correct.
Not dipping into the funds that the Commission has worked so hard to collect.
That's right.
Right, so, yes, go ahead.
Well, and I just wanna add, having served eight years on this Commission, I can see that it's going in a different direction, although this is definitely part of the strategic plan. The original strategic plan was for it to be an adjunct to city council as far as legislation. So I know that they're off to a new path. I want to wish them luck, and I know they can still continue to do work, they can still have extra meetings so that they can remain, and I hope they will, remain important and credible in this community by collaborating with and working with other organizations that are, that deal with women's issues in this community. So with that, I move item seven C.
Second. And I appreciate those comments, and again, I know that they will be at liberty to call special meetings, but it's one thing to call for special meetings, it's another thing for there to be regularly scheduled meetings. All I'm saying is that the message, I hope the message out there isn't that this city's not interested in this Commission, or that this Commission is not important, or that somehow it's become less important, or that somehow the mission of the Commission has been achieved, because it hasn't. It hasn't. We're a long way, as a society, from achieving the overall goals. But this is the motion, this is the ordinance in front of us, we have a motion, we have a second, and there's no one to speak, so I will call for roll call.
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman. Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver. Mayor Sinanian.
Yes.
And, Mr. Mayor, there's also a resolution of appropriation.
Yes. Will someone move on that resolution?
Don't move.
Yes, the resolution at seven C1, I'll second that.
Okay. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman. Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver. Mayor Sinanian.
Yes. Next item, please.
Under action items, A-1 is Director of Human Resources regarding Memorandum of Understanding MOU between City and Glendale Management Association on behalf of sworn police managers commencing July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2016. A-1 is a resolution approving and adopting the MOU.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, sir, we have a very brief presentation for you, and certainly Mr. Doyle can answer any questions. As you know, you have previously executed an MOU with the Glendale Management Association, GMA. This MOU is for the police sworn managers who are an adjunct to GMA. It's comprised of your lieutenants and your police captains, including the assignment of deputy chief. I believe there are 11 members of this particular bargaining group, similar to what you've seen with GMA, GCA, and really all of our bargaining groups that we've been able to reach agreement with. The increases here are really focused on minor adjustments that are in keeping with the market, and in particular, in this specific case, the focus on police lieutenants, because what you're seeing at this point is the compaction between police sergeant and police lieutenant. And to the extent that it is incumbent upon us, if we are going to have a high-functioning police department, that we have an incentive for the best and brightest among our police officers to matriculate through the department and be competitive in the open market, that we have an appropriate compensation package for those lieutenants. And so you are seeing in this MOU, the proposal to provide an adjustment to the ranges for police lieutenants, to separate them from police sergeants, such that the police sergeants aren't making so much as a sergeant that it is a disincentive to want to become a lieutenant. I would argue that, to the extent that some departments are having trouble with their management leadership and training across the country, it's a function of not being able to bring those best and brightest up to the management leadership ranks. And our goal is to have a very, very solid foundation of good cops, but also good business people, and a function of that is represented here in this MOU. If you have specific questions about the terms of the MOU, certainly Mr. Doyle can answer those for you.
Any questions for Mr. Doyle?
Not yet.
We have one speaker, which, if there are no questions immediately, I would like to invite to the podium, Mr. Mike Mohill.
Mr. Mayor.
How much time do you think you need?
Maybe four?
Four minutes?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Sinanian and council members. My name is Mike Mohill. Well, here we go again, increases in salaries for our safety officers. Now, an increase in salaries, nothing much, but you know what? That increase adds on towards their pension. You know, we have $1.5 billion, according to our Director of Finance last time we spoke here, it's unfunded. And when you give these officers a pay raise, it affects that unfunded debt. Is that fair to the people who have to pay the bills? Now, you also say that they want more money for their medical. Hey, I like more medical for my medical, too, but they have a Lexus program for their medical. I got Kaiser. They have Lexus pensions, I got Social Security. Where does it end? Now, you know, at one time, about 14 years ago, the police and the fire unions were getting about 75% of their last year's salary. Now they're getting 90% of that $100,000-plus salary, and they get to retire five years earlier. Is that fair? You know, Ms. Devine, when you ran for city council, according to your mailer, if you recall, you said the following, "I support the city's effort in pension reform and other cost savings measure." While you were running for council at several candidate forums, you said, quote, "Once elected, you're gonna form a blue-ribbon panel." Where's the panel for pension reform? Here we are, going to the next election, April, only a few months, and I haven't read anything in the newspapers or anything from the diocese about pension reform. And Mrs. Devine, you said you were gonna do something about it. I'm still waiting. Now, let me get my figures correct. According to your campaign 464, you received about $7,000 from the police and fire union. And now you sit here and you defend their pensions. Let's see, Mr. Najarian and Mrs. Friedman, in 2009, Mr. Najarian got $15,000 from the union, and Mrs. Friedman got $3,500 in pension from campaign contributions, I'm sorry. In 2013, Glendale Police Officers Association PAC, Mr. Najarian received $5,200, Mrs. Friedman also $5,200 in PAC money from the Police Officers Association. And in 2013, the GMA, that's the Managed Association PAC, also gave Najarian and Friedman $1,000 each. My question is, who's speaking for the public? Public didn't get a pay raise or on Social Security. Now, you've heard this, you've heard me say this many times in the past, and I will continue asking the question, when are we gonna have salaries and pensions in line with the public? City employees get 25% more money than people in private industry. If private, if we never gave our officers a pay raise over the next 10 years, they'd still be doing better than people in the outside world. When does it stop? Now, I have been coming here for years now and asking the same question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Mr. Ochoa, would you like to address some of those concerns?
And to the extent that it's important that you get numbers right, it is important that you tell a complete picture. The city does have a debt liability, as it were, with PERS. What Mr. Mohill doesn't tell you is that there are considerable assets to balance out that debt. I believe it's almost $1.4 billion, and there is nearly $900 million there in asset to offset that debt. It isn't as though that there is an unfunded liability for pension liability just sitting out there and not being addressed. To the extent that the issue of pension reform was brought up, and I think certainly was something that was important to Mrs. Devine's, Councilmember Devine's campaign, is something that the council has been focused on for quite some time, I can only reiterate again, just as Mr. Mohill has reiterated over the years, that we lead the state, and perhaps even the nation, when it comes to pension reform. Our public safety officer, all of our employees, pay a larger portion of the cost of their own pension than other agencies up and down the state and even across the country, I would wager. In this particular group, the 9% contribution that is required by PERS to offset, or to pay for the cost of the pension, is borne entirely by the employee. That is not the case in many, many cities. And in fact, as cities now have gotten on the bandwagon to say pension reform is important and our employees need to pay their cost for their pension, what they're doing is offsetting the cost of those pension increases to the employee by giving them raises. That might justify the indignation that someone like Mr. Mohill would like to espouse, but it isn't reality here in Glendale. Here in Glendale, those employees pay and have paid the employee's share. In addition, they also pay, in this particular case, 3.5% of the city's share of that pension liability. So the city council has put forward a pension reform plan that addresses the short-term cost, because what you're seeing now is, as PERS is trying to, and successfully trying to recapture the value of investment lost in the Great Recession, you are matching that and have matched that in collaboration with your, in partnership with your employee groups by doing the PERS cost sharing, and gone to a second tier, which has now become even a third tier, under the state's Pension Reform Act. So long-term, you've sealed the horizon of what your exposure is going to be. Short-term, you have taken steps aggressively, much more so, much sooner than others, to shore up what those obligations are. With respect to, it's important to put things in perspective. This MOU, it's a two-year MOU that covers effectively about 18 months, because we're halfway through the first year. The first year cost is $40,000, out of a $184 million general fund budget where the police department largely is housed. So that's important. The year two, full 12 months, is about $90,000, critically important. What you're seeing here in terms of the specific items, as I mentioned, in the first year, you would see police lieutenants effective January 1 of 2005, coming on now, would get a 1% and then a 2% adjustment in January of 2016. Hardly living high on the hog by way of what is going on in the market, and in terms of looking at a private sector counterpart, I'm sorry, but you are not going to compare a private security guard, for example, with a police officer, let alone a police professional, with years and years and perhaps decades of training and education to make sure that we are indeed, as you heard Mr. Lanza Faim earlier talk about, one of the, if not the, safest mid-sized city in America. Certainly in terms of a value proposition, you can capitalize on that here in Glendale. With respect to the specific adjustments, the police officer standards training pay is going to $150 a month increase, and retiree health savings plan, $125 a month increase. The idea here is, again, looking back to Mr. Mohill's discussion, which way would you like to have it, you don't pay retiree medical the way the state of California does, the way that some other agencies have, because effectively it's become much too expensive to do. Here, we have a, basically, a private sector hybrid plan, a defined contribution plan, where we will put money in on the front end while you're employed with us, and then you take that money with you when you retire and use it for allowable expenses. It seems to me that should be right up Mr. Mohill's alley and others of his ilk. So I think at this point, you have what is a very affordable, very fair MOU with this particular bargaining group. Again, if you would like more specific details, I would turn it over to Mr. Doyle.
Yes, Mr. Najarian?
Well, thank you for that explanation. I'm gonna be a little more brief in my response, and let's just get down to it. I'd like to issue a challenge to Mr. Mohill, to find another city in the county of Los Angeles, or in all of the Southern California region, that has a more conservative pension plan than the city of Glendale has. Now, if you do, please come forward. If you do not, your arguments ring hollow, Mr. Mohill. I say ring hollow. And you won't find one, but you can look, because we have the most conservative pension plan of all the cities in Southern California. That's my challenge.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian.
My, okay. For Mr. Mohill, I did not take $7,000 from the police or fire, so just to get that out of the way. About this issue, I looked at it as there being three elements in this change in the MOU, which will affect, as Mr. Ochoa said, and that was one of my questions to him when I was finding out about this change, was it will affect about 12 officers. The pay raise, the increase, 4% increase over two years. When I did my research, this is only gonna affect, I think, six or eight officers. They haven't had a pay increase since 2009, and I feel that they, this is justified, and I feel it's deserved. The second, in regard to the training incentives, I think if we look at what's going on in the United States and abroad today, for instance Ferguson, I think we're having incidences where police officers maybe aren't trained or prepared for incidences. So I believe that additional incentives to our police just guarantees us well-trained, well-prepared police management staff. And I also believe that this... And I also believe that this speaks to the future of our department. I think it's very important that we think about the officers moving up. And in regard to the health savings plan, we all know the cost of health insurance is going up for everybody, for everyone, all over the country. So I believe that this small increase, and it's not very much, this small increase is in keeping, thank you, with the upward trend of healthcare costs. So, Mr. Mohill, yes, I had, what, two of my priorities are fiscal responsibility and community safety. And I firmly believe that this small fiscal impact of these changes in the MOU are far outweighed by the community's safety that it will provide. So I will be approving this MOU change.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll move that item.
May we have the roll call, please?
Barry, on your microphone. Excuse me? Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Next item, please.
Item 8B is Director of Community Services and Parks regarding tennis concessionaires at Glorieta and Fremont Parks. B1 is a motion authorizing to execute a contract with Glendale Tennis Academy for five years with option to renew yearly for up to five additional times. B2 is a motion authorizing to execute a contract with Vigan and Larian of, for five years with the option to renew yearly for up to five additional times.
Thank you. Mr. Ochoa?
This has been an exhaustive process. As you know, it's been the council's priority to test the market and understanding the ability of our concessionaires at facilities like the Glorieta tennis courts, at the Fremont tennis courts, to ensure that we are getting full value and service to the community. So, Mr. Duran's department executed an RFP process, the proposals were evaluated. The results of those proposals are contained here in this staff report, and we are recommending that you move forward with these two concessionaires. This item has gone before the CSP Commission and was approved unanimously. If you have specific questions about the process or the providers, Mr. Duran, I'm sure can answer those for you.
Questions?
I'll move 8B, 1, and 2.
Second?
May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes.
May we have the next item, please?
Next item, at AC is Attorney regarding options for council consideration in preparing arguments for and against Measure C, D, E, and O. At C1 is a motion appointing drafters of arguments for and against Measure C, council compensation. 2 is a motion appointing drafters of arguments for and against Measure D, council districts. 3 is a motion appointing drafters of arguments for and against Measure E, GUSD trustee areas. 4 is a motion appointing drafters of arguments for and against Measure O, transient occupancy tax.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Garcia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The item before you, and just to provide a little background, as you know, in December, the council voted to put four ballot, four measures on the ballot for the April 2015 election, three charter amendments and one ballot revenue measure. Measure C is the amendment to the city charter to decouple council compensation from the government code requirements. Measure D would amend the city charter and adopt an ordinance regarding council districts, Measure D would do that, excuse me. Measure E would amend the city charter relative to the Glendale Unified School District trustee areas, and Measure O would adjust the transient occupancy tax from 10% to 12%. As part of those actions to put it on the ballot, the council also adopted resolutions, or included within those resolutions, a call for drafters of arguments for and against the ballot measures. In conjunction with that, there's a policy, a express policy preference for pointing individuals or organizations that set forth in the municipal code. So with respect to Measure C, and we can take these in order, but I'll just summarize them all at once. With respect to Measure C, council compensation, we received requests from councilmembers Najarian and Councilmember Weaver to draft the argument in favor, and we received arguments, we received requests to write arguments against Measure C from Vanguardians and from City Resident Brian Ellis. In accordance with the code, the preference for the argument against would be for Vanguardians to write that measure as a bona fide city organization, bona fide organization of residents. With respect to Measure D, the amendment to the charter related to council districts, as of right now, Councilmember Najarian had requested to draft the argument in favor. However, if, it's my understanding, speaking with Councilman Najarian, he may make a separate request that the city manager draft that argument in favor of Measure D. In addition, Mr. Brian Ellis has requested that he write the argument against Measure D, and as required by the code, the council would have to appoint him to write that argument against. With respect to Measure E, we received a request today from Superintendent Dick Sheehan and to write the argument in favor of Measure E, along with Board President Greco Corian. We did receive that today and not yesterday, however, I would just note that if absent any argument, there would be no argument in favor of that particular ballot measure, and I think public policy would discourage such a result, especially given the fact that the school board has requested that this be placed on the ballot. So, I'm recommending to you that you appoint Superintendent Sheehan and Board President Corian to write that measure. And again, Mr. Ellis requested to write the argument against Measure E, and so the council would be required to appoint him to write that argument.
Mr. Garcia, if I may interrupt you for a second. So what's the, what may happen if they didn't make the deadline, but we go ahead and appoint Mr. Sheehan and Mr. Greco Corian to write the argument for it? What's the?
There could be an argument that, that the request was untimely, and therefore it's improper. But my view is, is that, two things. One is, as elected officers, or at least, and appointed officers, as called for in the, in the code, the council's entitled to appoint, to appoint those persons to write that argument. And then, two, as I said, I believe public policy, good public policy dictates that there be a drafter in favor, especially the organization that proposed this particular charter amendment. And I would just point out that the oversight, there was a miscommunication between our office and Glendale Unified, as it relates to turning in the request. I think they believed that it was due on the 30th, and it was actually due yesterday. With respect to Measure O, the transient occupancy tax increase, councilmembers Najarian and Weaver also requested that, to write the argument in favor of that ballot measure, and we've received one request to write the argument against, and that would be Vanguardians. So the council will be required to submit the argument, or accept the argument from Vanguardians and publish that as the argument against Measure O. So I can go through them one by one after you've had time to discuss, or we can, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have some questions. On the, on Measure C, what was the vote on that at council to place it on the ballot?
To place that measure on the ballot was unanimous.
Okay. Well, I think my colleagues should join on Measure C. If you voted to place it on the ballot, it should also bear your name on the argument that's drafted to support the measure. I think you should. I mean, I don't think it's appropriate to vote unanimously, and I speak also for Ms. Friedman, who I think was a large, a strong proponent of this revision of council compensation, to back off when it comes time for the argument. So would my colleagues join in the?
I'm not sure I agree with the argument that agreeing to put it on the ballot is the same thing as supporting it, because allowing the voters the choice isn't the same thing as supporting the voters to vote for it. But it so happens that I do support that the voters vote for it, so I have no problem adding my name to it.
Well, and it's my position that it's the community's decision, and it's, I don't, I don't feel that I should influence that decision, so I won't put my name on that.
I'll put my name on it.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I just want to, I'd like you to rethink that decision, because in the ballot argument, I would feel very compelled to list the council people who voted to put this on the ballot. It will include your name, it will include Ms. Friedman's name. You know, I don't think it's fair to put it on the ballot and then say, well, I just wanted the folks to vote on it and give it up to them. I mean, you must have an opinion on it. Your opinion must have been to go forward, but otherwise you would have said, no, I don't want this to go forward. I would hate to do that. But it's certainly within our, within our discretion to list the council members that did vote for it. I would feel much more confident if, as a unified council, we could reflect our vote to place it on the ballot when we place our names on the ballot argument.
Since I'm all for it, I'm fine, yeah.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, Mayor. That's, I think that's the correct thing to do. Because, basically, I'm saying you can't hide from this at this point. I understand there's an election year, but council compensation is going to go to the voters, then it will come back, if approved, for us to discuss as to what we want to do. But I'm not going to let someone hide behind, you know, not signing a ballot argument once they agree to place it on the ballot. I'm just letting everyone know, fair, fair disclosure, and that goes for Ms. Friedman, too. I don't know why, was she contacted to?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I forwarded the information to all the council.
I mean, this is a game. I mean, I really see this as a game, but that's okay. There's other ways to get the point across.
I don't want to make this a debate. It's just a decision that I've made. I haven't put my name on any of the ballot measures. So that was my decision to let the community decide on all of the issues and without any of my influence, and that's the way it will stay.
And I'll say that the only reason I, my name isn't on one measure or another in support or against, just because I didn't make the deadline. Life happened, but I support this measure, this ballot measure, and I'm kind of bummed that my name's not there in support of it, so by no means am I trying to hide.
Well, I appreciate you.
Yeah, short of, short of.
You still have an opportunity.
Violating some ethical rule because I missed the Monday night cutoff point, please add my name to it.
Do we want to take these motions one at a time, or do you want to go through all of them?
One at a time.
Okay, so then, what I'm hearing is, would be a motion to appoint councilmembers Najarian and Weaver and Mayor Sinanian to write the argument in favor of Measure C, in the way that it's, we've done in the past, and so this way the motion is, our office would draft, take the first crack at drafting it, and then the council members would sign it, given that there's some debate or some decision-making on what will go into that. We anticipate bringing that back to you on the 27th before the final deadline of January 30th. So, so that would be part of the motion. The second part of C1 would be to appoint Vanguardians to draft the argument against.
Can we have that as one motion?
Yeah, it's one motion.
So moved.
Is Vanguardians still a viable entity?
My understanding is, is yes.
Okay.
I'll move.
So we have a motion?
I'll move that item.
Second? May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Okay, so now C2.
So C2 is Measure D, and as I noted, Councilmember Najarian had requested to sign the argument. I had, you know, with respect to that particular measure, since we're putting it on in part to address litigation issues, one approach would be for the council, at least a majority of the council, to sign on to that. Another approach could be for the council to designate the city manager to prepare the argument in favor of that measure. So it's, I'll leave it to the council.
I like the second approach.
I'll move that the city manager write the, the argument, and the city attorney.
Okay. Well, yeah, just so you know, I will not be signatory to the ballot argument for, because our office has to prepare the impartial analysis on the measure. So it would be.
So I'll move that the city manager.
So it would be the city manager to write the argument in favor, and it would be Brian Ellis to write the argument against.
I'll move that item.
Second? May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Measure E?
Measure E would be Dr. Sheehan and Board President Corian to write in favor, and Mr. Ellis to write the argument against.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second? May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Measure O?
Measure O, with respect to the transient occupancy tax, I forgot to mention that, as you know, Councilmember Friedman has been out of town, so I think it's been difficult for her to respond. Although she did get back to me today that she wanted to sign on to the transient occupancy tax argument in favor. So, right now, I have it as councilmembers Najarian and Weaver and Friedman proposing to write the argument in favor of the transient occupancy tax adjustment, and then Vanguardians to write the argument against.
So moved.
Do you want to join on that? I think we, you know, we discussed it, and it's a really good idea with little impact to our own residents. These are the visiting hordes that come to see the Rose Bowl game and the parade, and we're well behind other cities in terms of the tax.
Now, you call them hordes, they may not show up.
Not hordes!
Hordes, hordes!
Hordes, no, hordes, it's just, I mean, you know.
Enunciate, enunciate. I'll move that item.
So that would, just so we're clear, that would be.
Second?
It would be Najarian, Friedman, and Weaver in favor and Vanguardians against.
Councilmember Devine?
Yes.
So was there a second?
Second.
There was, there was, Councilmember Najarian, second. Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is oral communication. This is a five-minute portion. Discussion is limited. Item is not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and report.
Thank you, and the first speaker is Anaheed Melkonian, followed by Mike Mohill. Five minutes, please state your name for the record.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Anaheed Melkonian, Glendale resident and homeowner, almost 16 years as a Glendale resident, but a homeowner since 2007. Just, I noticed that you have a new member. I would like to introduce myself as a community member. I've been here only 16 years, but I did a lot of community services. Only seven years at St. Mary's Armenian Church as a Sunday school teacher, and then I added the Saturdays. I volunteered at Burbank Temporary Aid Center. I prepared breakfast, assisted all the homeless people. It's almost over 10 years. I am certified IRS tax preparer, and I provide tax preparation services to low-income families. I do whatever I can for my community, even though I did not grow up here. But now, to my surprise, when this issue regarding my house is going on, really upset me, and I'm really disappointed. And it makes me to feel that I have been discriminated, because there are other situations that the city did not take the same, same matter as they are taking the situation related to my house. And this letter, notice of intent to file criminal complaint, and guess what? For something built 70 years ago. Is there a statute of limitation? There was something built on this, attached to this house, another room, in 1952. Numerous times, the inspectors, they have been at this property numerous times. How did they miss the patio that was built at my property back in between 1939 and 1943? How come the assessor's office, they noticed it, they make a note, and the previous owner start paying the property tax? And now city, I would like to find out, how the city find out after 70 years that there is a patio and there is no permit for that patio? There is a garage addition and there is no permit. How did you find out? This has been going on since 2000, fourth quarter of 2010. I've been meeting with different people, different professionals or employees of the city of the Glendale. I meet with Mr. Najarian, with Mr. Sinanian, and then John Brownell, James Edwards, with different, René Sada. I've tried, and I, today I was looking my emails. I have like, maybe over 100 emails, and I'm trying to solve this issue in a proper way. This is a nonsense, to file a criminal complaint against me just because I am the owner of that house, and just because something is built in 1939, 1943. This is ridic- complaint against me just because I am the owner of that house and just because something is built in 1939, 1943. This is ridiculous. This is like how you treat the homeowners who are responsibly paying the taxes, actively providing community services, and all of your employees, if you ask. Anytime they phoned me, emailed me, I responded to their email or to their phone call. Or the way they treat me. I don't appreciate that. For example, just one example—I don't want to make it a list. If you need—I will show the list later. Renee Sada, he left a message for me. I have to enter your garage. If not, I will use the law forces, blah, 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 to enter your—the garage. My neighbor next door, he converted the garage to a living space. I'm asking John Brownell, how come you are not getting inside the garage? And he tells me, oh, the owner doesn't let me. I cannot go in. Then how come you are forcing me, threatening me with legal ways to enter my garage? I let him to see my garage because I have nothing to hide. Even the constructor checked the material. That part, they are considering as an addition, and the original garage, according to the city employee, is the same material, same wood, same nail. I just don't understand how you came up with this idea that the patio or the garage addition is unpermitted. Or if you're providing a certain law or building uniform code, whatever you name it, I've been asking the building and permit and safety department, please give me the—when this law was in effect, when it start working, when this law was creating or this building code. You cannot use that current building uniform code to evaluate something built 70 years ago, 1939, 1943. Because I have the assessor's documents. It speaks for itself.
Thank you, Ms. Melkonian. Now, this—don't go away. This issue has—I think Ms. Melkonian has been in front of council before, and I've certainly—like she stated, I've met with her. And there's something fundamentally unfair about demanding of a homeowner to demolish part of their property. I mean, I think that's what the city's demanding right now. It's a demand—demolish part of your property, which she purchased in the—what year did you purchase it?
2007, August 2007.
That—no one's denying was built in the late 30s to 1943. There has to be a more logical, humane way of dealing with this problem. And I just haven't heard what that what that way of dealing with this issue is. I understand that there may be safety issues. I think I've heard that from our staff. And I'm not questioning the legitimacy of the safety issues because of how they were built in 1930s. But right now, this lady, this homeowner, this resident of the city of Glendale is being threatened with legal action, and really no way, no no cost-effective or reasonable ways being shown to her as to how she can deal with that issue. I think one device she was given, and last time when she was here, was just go through the process and acquire permits for what you have now. And of course, she's being told by those who'd be giving her the permit that you won't get a permit. So pay the $3,000. You're going to get denied anyway, which puts her in a precarious situation. So is there someone who can answer as to what—short of filing a criminal lawsuit against her, what the solution is that's logical and not draconian?
The issue that we have, and just first and foremost, the filing of a criminal complaint is the extension of—the full extension of the code enforcement process. So it isn't as though that this is a criminal charge that you would hear in something that is much more of a heinous crime. It's just that the end of the code enforcement process, it evolves into this or develops into this criminal complaint. To the extent that this case began on November 10th of 2010, and to the extent that, as the resident is explaining, that she has had almost a little over four years of working back and forth, I think that at least does demonstrate that no one is holding the sword of Damocles over her, and rather, our goal is to seek compliance. Now, ironically enough, the file for this sits on my desk, as you and I have talked about it. And it seems to me that the—and I sent it off literally this morning for an update from code enforcement. The goal, I think, is to try to legalize what is there versus tearing it down. As I sit here tonight, I don't have the answer as to where we are in terms of the status update with that. But the goal, I think, short of requiring the demolition of the improvement would be, how do we find a way to legalize it, which would require that she go through the process, which would require double fees as the penalty for work that is done without a permit. But as you point out, Mr. Mayor, the idea would be—that would be much more reasonable, I think, than requiring the removal. At the end of the day, what we want is compliance.
Right. And it's great to hear.
Yes.
That's great to hear because I think her letter states—it's dated December 15th, and it says, you have two weeks, after which you're being assessed something like $1,000 a day. So as a layperson and as a resident of this city, I understand how anyone in her position would be utterly freaked out over being assessed thousands upon thousands, not tens of—or hundreds of thousands of dollars at some point in penalties for not having done this thing that she's trying to understand what it is that she needs to do.
Most definitely, sir. And that's—the idea is to find a way that—not to impede the quality of life of the folks around her. I believe this does emanate from a code enforcement case between two neighbors.
Right.
And that is just unfortunate, and ultimately, you know, one bad turn deserves another, and this is what ends up happening. The goal would be, how do we get beyond it? So we're not wasting any more of your time, certainly any more of the residents' time, and absolutely no more of code enforcement's time. We are working on that. As I say, it's absolutely ironic. I actually have the file right here, sent off this morning for the update. And I will have that post haste, and we will have code enforcement circle back to the resident.
Okay. So, yes.
If I may—I just—I just want—I was going to ask how this how this all came about, and I think the city manager just let us know that. It seems that she's been doing her due diligence. She's been really trying. And I don't understand how—do we not have any anything in our codes or that say that after 70 years—I mean, we have—we have development going on now where things are happening that are not being caught. And here she is, this poor woman with—you know, with the battle between two people being caught in a personal argument. It seems like she should be given some sort of—I mean, I appreciate what you're saying tonight.
Certainly.
That sounds like going in the right direction.
The only—the only—for every action, there's an equal and opposite reaction. There is another party to the code enforcement case that is saying, why would you give special dispensation to somebody else who has no interest, or at least initially had no interest in being reasonable, or felt that they were being treated reasonably? And so as we try to referee a civil dispute and get pulled into the middle of it, we have to be as completely impartial as possible and at the same time be commonsensical. And sometimes those work at cross purposes. As I say, we will update the file and find out exactly where this is, because again, the goal is compliance, find a way to legalize the improvement.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Does that—
So may I speak?
Well, technically, no.
Oh, okay.
I'm sort of asking rhetorical question. Does that sort of—
I will be back every Tuesday until you will find a solution.
You've spoken already. So you heard what we said, and you heard what the city manager said. I hope it puts your mind at comfort on some level for the foreseeable future.
Okay. Thank you, and happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you, too. Thank you. Ike Mohill, followed by Don Margolin.
Good evening.
And the viewing audience, my name is Mike Mohill. In April 2014, council members appointed Zari Sinanian as the city's new mayor. Fresh air filled council chambers. From past experience, few expected a new tone from the person who would control the council meetings for the next 12 months. Previously entrenched councilman Dave Weaver silenced his critics when he became mayor in 2013. New Mayor Sinanian silently listened to his critics. Mayor Weaver acted like a bully. Mayor Sinanian acts like a gentleman. Mayor Weaver would not place term limits on the ballot for the people to vote because he knew best. Mayor Sinanian supported term limits as a way to encourage more voter's participation. Mayor Weaver limited speakers to only an allotted time. Mayor Sinanian has never limited a speaker allotted time, even with his most vocal critics. Also, he often asked speakers if they wished to have more time at the podium. Mayor Weaver imposed a tyrannical rule that we, the people, only speak for one or two minutes instead of our historical five minutes. Mayor Sinanian voted to retain public comments to five minutes and said other cities should emulate Glendale. Hopefully, Mayor Sinanian's style of leadership will set a new standard for future mayors to emulate and not the style of confrontation, defiance, opposition, and resistance. On another more serious matter, one of the last agenda items last year was to grant our city employees a Christmas bonus representing over $1 million. Not suggested was to use this money to draw down the $1.5 billion of unfunded pension liabilities, according to Bob Elliott, Director of Finance. Mayor Sinanian asked the city mayor, why were we giving our city employees bonuses? The city manager said, it has been six years since our employees had received raises. We had cut about 500 employees, and the remaining employees were picking up the slack. What Mr. Ochoa did not say was even if our police officers did not receive a pay increase for the next 10 years, they would be making more money than in private industry. In 2013, Councilwoman Paula Devine received about $7,000 in PAC money from our Fire and Police Association and was the public employee's favorite candidate. She stated she always sees city employees working hard, doing a great job. She also mentioned the bonus represent a pat on the back for a job well done. And once elected, she would call for a blue ribbon panel for pension reform. Where's that panel? Councilman Weaver, running for reelection in April, stated city morale was low because of the layoffs. Councilman Weaver received over $11,000 in 2011 from the Glendale Police Officers PAC. Mr. Weaver, a retired government engineer, never worried about a poor economy and being laid off by his employer. He further stated since, I was the only resident appearing before the council criticizing the pay bonus, that I should sell my house and move out of Glendale. I paid for my house without government security. We have many good city employees, but the politics of our public employees' unions influence almost all issues concerning finances of our city, from overdevelopment, traffic congestion, lack of city parking, crumbling infrastructure, reckless usage of the city's only landfill, lack of soccer fields for our kids in South Glendale, increases in water and electric rates, and the illegal transferring of millions of dollars of the taxpayers' money from GWP into the pockets of our public employees. Instead of laying off good employees last year and giving them golden parachutes for early retirement, council should have made the decision to place all future city employees on social security and a 401K plan. Why are we paying government employees about 25% more than a comparable job in the private sector? Why should city employees receive bonuses when they have superior benefits and the public only has social security and no guaranteed employment? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Next speaker is Don Margolin, followed by Connie Knox.
Mr. Mayor, city council? I'm Don Margolin. I live in Verdugo Woodlands. And Paula Devine, you did an amazing campaign. I got so many flyers on a daily basis. Well done. I grew up in Hollywood, and in 1959, my father drove to Hollywood and bought a Nash Rambler from Don Rice Rambler on Brand Boulevard. In 1962, I worked for a Hollywood paper, and I delivered newspapers in the Verdugo Woodlands area, which is an interesting coincidence. Currently, I work for the LA Weekly and the Pasadena Weekly. And I'm starting off with my—the paperwork I gave you. The first page shows that I try to do a good job conserving energy, and that's what the first page is all about. I'm number three right now, which—you know, whatever. The second page is from the publisher of the Pasadena Weekly, asking Philippe Escander if there's any chance that the raise in new news rack registration going from $52 a year to $241 a year, which is a 400% raise in fees. And I'm sure everybody's aware that the newspapers today aren't doing well—well because of the phones and the computers. And a 400% raise from last year to this year doesn't seem fair. I know the city council has a conscience. I don't know if you're aware that this is coming true as of the end of this month. I'm hoping that I'm representing LA Weekly, Pasadena Weekly, and something can be done where the registration would stay somewhere near $52 and not $241. I also feel that the residents, including myself, have a right to go out and get a newspaper from a newsstand. The increase would make it very difficult for our presence to stay in Glendale. I hope this year is a better year, and I hope there's something that can be done in fairness with a good conscience. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Margolin. Is this—are we bringing it up 400%?
And is that—
We have increased the news rack fee to reflect what the cost is.
Is that per—per news rack?
Yes. As for the bank of racks that we have, yeah. And there's not very many of them, but there are—they are out there. As noted, this fee kicks in going forward in 2015. But at this point, I couldn't speak intelligently as to what the elements are within that cost study for the fee.
So this is based on a cost study?
Yes.
So that means that in—let's say, the previous year, the immediately previous year, 2014, we were somehow way beyond the—below the—what it costs for us to—what do—I mean, what do we do with these racks? They operate them. So what do we do? What's the cost associated with—
As I said, sir, at this point, I couldn't tell you. I don't have it in front of me.
Can we put a freeze on this until—until we find out?
Certainly.
Good.
Let's do that.
Well, all right. The fee's there. We have to charge it when it's due. If we want to freeze it, we'd have to bring an agenda back to—
Oh, yeah.
And I would say, this issue had come to us before. There—I mean, there were—the cost of service study, I've looked at it. It's pretty thorough. In essence, the city was subsidizing that service. And while the increase is is high compared to where it was, that just means the city was significantly subsidizing it before. It's related to the staff's cost to inspect, to process them, and we can—
We just don't have the cost study here in front of us.
That's fine. Can we agenda this, please?
Yes, sir. That's what the council's pleasure is.
Okay. The 400% though is—
Yes.
A little bit high, to put mildly. So I'll hear something?
Yeah.
No, we—we—we're just discussing amongst ourselves.
Yeah.
Thank you for your—
Thank you.
Presentation. We're going to put this on the agenda and revisit this issue because the 400% clearly excessive.
Yeah, our pay doesn't go up that high. Neither does yours, or my taxes or gasoline. It's the only thing 400%.
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Okay. Next speaker is Connie Knox, followed by Nick Franklin.
Hi. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for bringing up the kennel fees, because that's why I'm here. And I'm sorry, Mr. Ochoa, but I've been paying kennel fees since 2008, and I never paid more than $100 unless somebody in the city department did me a favor. I've never paid more than $100. And I just want to make sure everybody knows, I'm not a commercial kennel. I have four dogs in my home. Every one of my dogs was adopted from an animal shelter. And the fee went from— Every one of my dogs was adopted from an animal shelter, and the fee went from $100 to $271, not $229, I have the bill. I didn't bring it with me, I forgot it tonight, but it went from $100 to $271. That's a huge increase for a residence. On top of that, I have to pay licensing fees for every one of my dogs, which we're all due now, and then one of my kids has to get a rabies shot. So while I am, and a lot of people in northwest Glendale that you know very well, are attempting to save the lives of animals, and while our large, large neighbor down the street has a no-kill movement in the city of Los Angeles, which I work with and participate in, the city of Glendale is now going to prevent people who want to adopt extra dogs from adopting them because the fees are so high. And I just wanted to bring that up, and I really would like you to take another look at that, because it was not, I mean, I've only paid $100 since 2008.
I don't doubt that at all.
And then, from $100 to $271, that's a huge increase. And I mean, I, I know, I know Pasadena Humane Society very well, I work with a lot of those people. They've, they came to my house once to do an inspection, that's all. So I just, I just want to point out that I think that's a really, really high fee. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Knox.
The item here, similar to as Mr. Garcia had indicated, was that we had been subsidizing kennel fees. I have no doubt that that was the fee. I think it was $102 and $51 respectively to $229 now as part of this, this current year. The long story short is that we weren't recovering the cost of providing that service, for better or for worse. At this point, as part of this current fiscal year's budget, we made the recommendation that we would recover those costs. At the end of the day, the idea behind the kennel fee is to do the inspection, the inspection has a cost, and the idea there is that we want to make sure that the property in question, regardless of how big the heart of the dog owner might be, that the property is suitable for holding all of those dogs and kenneling those dogs.
So it's actually going to her home and...
And my, I do the same thing in my house. An inspector comes and looks and makes sure that my house, my yard, that it isn't just overcrowded with animals, that it's safe and sanitary and decent for the animals as well as the people. There is a cost to do that.
Yes, yeah, there would be.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Yes. Mr. Franklin.
Happy New Year to everybody.
Happy New Year to you, welcome.
I just wanted to, and my name is Nick Franklin, and I live here in Glendale. I just wanted to thank Mr. Ochoa. I caught him on the run over the holiday. He was saying he was running to a meeting, but I wasn't too sure about that. You know, it's the holiday, right?
It was lunchtime, huh?
Yeah, okay. He fixed up the memorial just outside the door here. But there's one thing that has not been yet done to the memorial, is the plaque for Larry Zerion. The tree is there, but there's, there's nothing acknowledging his service to the city like there is for Ginger. There's, there's, there's nothing there with his name on it, his years of service. So can we please do something, something about that?
Of course, we have the train station named after Larry Zerion, and Ginger Brimberg doesn't have that, but sure, we can have, I guess we can...
Because there's, they put a tree up, you know, the tree is there. If you feel, if you feel that we've done enough to this point, I understand that.
I can check with CSP to see if they have, they may very well have a small plaque that they would go, usually it goes with a collar on the tree, I'll find out for you, I'll find out.
Don't give it to the same guy that did the signs at the Exchange Parking Garage.
I didn't mind that.
You didn't mind, right?
I didn't know.
Nice.
Also, can I ask Mr. Najarian a question?
Sure.
Is there any way you can partner with the city? Because, you know, there's no, there's not a lot of places for people to sit when it's, when it's raining.
Bus stops, you mean?
Yes, sir. They have the old-fashioned flat thing there with no protection for people that are waiting, waiting on a bus.
Is that everywhere, or just in a certain place that you're talking about? Sorry.
Well, they, they've put in, they've put in the new, the new, the new ones, but the old, there's still a lot of old ones. Have I lost you?
No, no, I know what you're saying. Mr. Golanyan can give us maybe an inventory and, and come back to us, and we can decide what we want to do with those.
Because I, I, you know, I think something needs to be done, you know, because sitting out in the rain is not a good idea.
It's not.
And one more thing, and then I'll be quiet. We don't have closed caption for hearing impaired to enjoy City Council.
I like the use of the word "enjoy."
So maybe this is something that needs to be done as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Nick.
Yes, sir.
And that's the last speaker that we had today. What's next? Mr. Clerk?
New business?
Do we have new business?
We do, we do, and I'd like to move that pursuant to Article 8, Section 1 of the City Charter and Government Code, Section 54957.1A5, council hereby approves the city attorney's appointment of Doreen Marderosian as Senior Assistant City Attorney, and further, that a written copy of the motion shall be transcribed, certified, and delivered by the city clerk to the Office of the Civil Service Commission of the City of Glendale as the written statement required by Article 24, Section 5, Subsection 2 of the Charter.
Second.
Yeah, thank you. May we have the roll call, please? Councilmember Devine?
Yes.
Friedman? Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver? Mayor Sinanian?
Yes.
Next item?
Admissed?
Admissed.
Admissed at 8:04 PM. Thank you, everyone.